Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, Tuesday, May 24th, 2022. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Well, thank you all for joining us this evening. We've had a pretty packed agenda tonight that we'll get through. The first item is, are there any comments from the members of the council tonight?
I will very briefly, I just want to commend, you know, we've, I've been following along with the VI stuff we've been working on. I just want to commend our city staff, our code enforcement and our building officials, as well as our CDBG coordinator for the work they've been doing behind the scenes trying to help us find a good solution to, to the problems at the Virginia Intermont Campus. I know it's a big issue and we're at the very beginning of trying to tackle it, but I just want to thank those, those city officials for the work they've done so far.
You know, a lot of times we talk about the negative things, some of the bad things that happen, but there's a lot of good going on in our community and a lot of it dealing with our young people. Tonight, we're going to recognize two individuals for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, and that's a great honor, and I'm glad we're able to do that. Also, in case people missed it, in Sunday's paper, Dr. Perigin was talking about the school system and how they, some of the accomplishments they've had the last couple of years. And I noticed partly for space, what was in the printed version left out compared to the online version, a long list of accomplishments. And I'm not going to read all of them because you can go do that, but there are a couple that I thought were really worth pointing out, you know, that, because some of this you see, and he talked about like the athletics and the sports teams, that they have five team district champions, two regional champions, a state runner-up, and two state semifinalists. You see those kind of things in the paper a lot, but it's these other things that you don't really see, like the attention to the arts, that you had a Virginia high student that was the first place winner of the Congressional Art District in Virginia's ninth district, that you had another that was the first place winner at the Virginia School Board Association Spring Regional Art Contest. Or things, and we talk a lot about the need to prepare students for careers, that the first female graduate from the auto mechanics class in 2021 won the Tennessee State Collegiate State Championships in auto mechanics as a student at Northeast Tennessee State, and that student was helped out by the Educational Foundation with a scholarship. Speaking of scholarships, and I'm always impressed when I see this, that the seniors this year have earned more than $1.6 million in scholarships. And that's an incredible amount when you think of the help for those students to go on, you know, and, and it's other things, practical skills, like personal finance, students had the ninth best performance in the wise financial exam in the entire nation, or that the nursing students had all passed their written state board exams on their first attempt. So there's a lot of, of good going on, especially with these young people as we end up the school year, but it gives me a lot of hope and confidence in the future when I see these kind of accomplishments. So I just want to congratulate all the, the students on what they have done this year.
Well, I just wanted to say real quick, this is not city-related, so hopefully don't get in trouble for doing this, but it's someone's very special's birthday today in the city of Bristol, Virginia. Juliette Farnham is six years old, and her and her mama are at home watching, so I told her I would wish her happy birthday, so happy birthday Juliette, and your dad will see you in a few hours. Yeah. Moving on to our next item is city manager comments.
No comments tonight, council.
Okay.
I'm technically not working, I'm just here supervised.
Yep. The next item is matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items, and these are for non-agenda items. The first person that signed up is Michael Pollard. And as you're coming up, I will just remind everyone that everyone gets three minutes to speak tonight. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on, when the yellow light will come on, your time is almost up, and when the red light comes on, your time has ended. So we ask you to state your name and your address in the microphone clearly for the record, and we ask you to be courteous of your time and each other's. Thank you. Mr. Pollard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would like to recognize and, and thank whoever was involved with the city staff concerning reinstating the recycling location on Lee Street. That will make cardboard recycling much simpler for people on this side of town, and it's very much appreciated. I would like to also say that we still have work to do, because it would be nice to regain a recycling location further to the east of here, but having a second location that's available after hours is, is a great improvement. As I have been visiting people over the past few weeks, some other things that we still have progress to make on have been coming up, such as additional unsafe locations other than at VI, there are houses that are unsafe, have very tall grass, and so on, so forth. I know that we have limited resources to handle some of those things, so some are a matter of taking time. Just up the road from here, I believe it was on Moore Street, I saw a trailer with a farm use tag, which of course, as you're aware, those are only to be used for farm use, and the unlicensed farm use tag has very few limitation, very few legal uses other than specifically for farm use, as opposed to a licensed tag for a farm vehicle which has additional flexibility. Anyway, we are making progress, but we have a way to go, and I would like to thank the city for the progress that we have made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. The next person that signed up is Mr. Danny Christian.
My name is Danny Christian, for the record. I'm back. I'm not going away until something's done. You almost killed us last night. Two fifty this morning, tree sixteen inches around, crushed, just thought we'd be sleeping. We'd have been dead, nobody'd know it for months. Now, somebody might do something. Chad Osborne was y'all's monster. He's the one that did this. Nobody's doing nothing, nobody's saying nothing. You don't even know how to get a hold of me. I'm not going away at all. I'll be here every meeting until something's done for me and my family. My wife's pregnant again, we're starving, and we're having that baby. If something happens, and she has a miscarriage. Thank you.
Mr. Christian, the city, we truly empathize with the situation you're in. You, you took us to court, and the court dismissed the case.
The next person that signed up for public comment is Mr. Joel Kellogg.
Good evening. Joel Kellogg, 104 Maryland Avenue, Bristol, Tennessee. Just real quick to, to start tonight, I wanted to see if we could, if we could change things up a little bit, because there's no information about the landfill update, or then we're having a landfill update. So I was wondering if we could do public comment after the presentation or whatever it is that we have planned, so that way we can, we can speak accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. The next person that signed up for public comment is Ms. Nancy Marnie.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I'm a property owner. Just because something can be done does not mean that it should be done. Sometimes we need to be protected from ourselves. Correct decisions must be made within the context in which they exist or function. Unfortunately, the city has too frequently been an enabler, gut punched and whipped big time by people of questionable quality. The citizens of Bristol, Virginia are the victims of bad dealings, both done and not done. We're in a terribly insecure, unstable situation right now. This city is in a very, very complicated, complex, uncertain situation. We already have a massive crippling bonded debt of more than $104 million as I speak. $104 million bonded debt. We are legally required to pay that debt. Now, that debt will not be paid until 20 years from now, in the year 2042, which actually will go over a little bit into 43. But we already have a 20-year tied-to-the-post commitment legally, right now as I speak. Much of this debt was preventable. I know, I was there. Much of this $104 million debt, which was more than that, but much of that debt was preventable, but we've got it. We're the victims. The landfill has cost us millions and millions of dollars already. This current year plus next year, we will have spent at least $7 million, at least. It's more than that, but I don't know how much more, but it's more than that. We've already spent, wasted millions of dollars. We already have a lawsuit pending from the city of Bristol, Tennessee. They can start that lawsuit in one telephone call. That's all it'll take, because the person who can make that decision has already been told, you don't need to get our permission, just do it. That's how close we are to a lawsuit, I mean, to the one we know about. There's no end in sight to the landfill. There will be an end at some point, but we don't know when, we don't know how much, but we know it's there, and we know we've got to pay it. We're already in a lawsuit with BVU, Bristol, Virginia Utility. We're in a lawsuit right now, this very minute. It started out at $20 million, and I don't know where it is now, the last figure I knew was around six. But we are currently in a lawsuit with Bristol, Virginia Utility. That was millions of dollars. Now, as a citizen and a victim, we were told years ago, when the falls was developed, and we were told years ago, I was there, I know, some of you all weren't even born, I was there. We were told that the landfill would bring into the city four to five million dollars per year in profit. We were told that the falls development, I was told personally, and then it was put out publicly, that the profit to the city of Bristol from the falls development would be approximately $11 million a year. So you combine that, and we should have been getting $15 million a year, every year, in profit. Now, I checked with the chief financial officer of the city of Bristol, Virginia today, so I could be current on my information, and I said, how much profit do we show on the books? And I was told, none. Zero. Zero. False assumptions, illogical thinking, lack of critical thinking, lack of knowing how to make decisions. Very recently, this council, right here, this council approved a 30-year debt to build a public school. Now, think back to what I just said. We're already in debt for 20 years on $104 million we are legally required to pay. We've already got that. We've been working on that for a long time. Now, you all recently, I don't know when it was, but it was very recently, approved a new 30-year debt to build a public school. We don't have any crisis in a public school. We don't have an emergency situation. We haven't had a big fire, we didn't have an explosion, nobody dropped a bomb on it, the ceiling didn't fall in and take half the building with it. We have schools that have some maintenance problems because the maintenance was not done when it should have been done through the years. I know, I talked personally with one of the original architects of Virginia High School. I was in the first junior class that went in the new Virginia High School. I have talked recently with one of the architects of that building. I have also talked with some of the professional businesses that have been called in to try to correct some of the problems in the schools. And I have also talked with some of the maintenance crews that work for the public school systems, and they all gave me the same answer, the maintenance was not done how it should have been, when it should have been. Where'd the money go? What was it used for? It was there. I know, I was in the meetings, I heard it. I heard $75,000 given by the city council to the school board to put in an elevator somewhere, and I haven't seen that elevator yet, and that's been about 25 years ago. Sloppy, sloppy, careless, stupid, and yet we're going along with it. You see, we're swallowing all this stuff, hook, line, and sinker. I'm not, I know better. There's no emergency situation here. It doesn't exist. It's a want. It's a want, and what these children need is to learn about life, not which button to push. Critical thinking, clarifying their thoughts, learn how to use your brain. You don't need a new school building to do that. We've got it. It's here now, right now. A rose by any other name is still a rose. Still a rose. The procedure that has been approved is questionable at best for building that school. Questionable at best. You build a foundation on sand and slippery banana peels, don't be surprised at what you get. Don't be surprised.
Ms. Marnie, I'm sorry, we're going to have to move on, we're-
All right, I'll finish, I'll wrap up right now.
Thank you, we're about at 10 minutes, thank you.
Now, in my opinion, it is my opinion, I would suggest that this council should revoke its previous approval of building this school for the time being. There will come a time we will need a new school, of course we will, but if age were the factor, there would be no Harvard, Yale, Princeton, University of Virginia, et cetera, et cetera. Now, one of my good friends was one of three men who was in charge of the endowment fund of Harvard University. That was billions with a B, but they did not tear down the old buildings before they built new ones. They kept them. Now, my suggestion to this council is revoke what you did, revoke your approval for that new school at this time. This is not the time. We, we, things are too uncertain. We don't know what's going to happen. We don't have a casino, there isn't any casino. We don't know what's going to happen or where we're going. It's not the right time, folks. There will be a right time, but this isn't it. Hold off, but first, you would have to revoke your permission, which will stop it, for a while, for a while, a year or two, then we'll know something. And then if we find out we've all of a sudden gotten hold of a bunch of money we hadn't counted on, we can designate that money to pay for a new school in about 10 years, and it will be ours, free and legitimate. Instead of continuing what I consider to be fiscal irresponsibility on this one issue, maybe some more, things have to be sustainable, folks. If you can't sustain it, don't do it. If you don't have the money, don't spend it. Instead of indulging ourselves into continuing fiscal irresponsibility, stay the course. You were given a course five or six years ago that was proven, it was successful, it was helping us move ahead in a positive way to deal with this massive debt. It's a catastrophic debt, but we were beginning to, to move ahead. Stay the course. Stay the course. Thank you for the extra time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie.
I really do appreciate it very much. That was very kind of you.
The next person that signed up, Ms. Nofflin. I know you, you wrote landfill and budget. Did you also want to speak now about a non-agenda item?
No.
Later, okay, yes. That's the last person that signed up for non-agenda items, so now we will have our adoption of our regular agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard, absent.
Yes. Okay. Regular agenda item number one, proclamations honoring Carl Taylor and Michael Rowe on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. No one signed up for public comment for this item, staff report.
Counsel, tonight you have before you two proclamations to recognize Carl Taylor and Michael Rowe, who are members of the Boy Scouts of America Troop Eight located at State Street United Methodist Church in Bristol. Both individuals recently attained the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in Boy Scouts. Both Scouts completed service projects in the community as a prerequisite for achieving their Eagle Scout rank. The foremost responsibility of the Eagle Scout is to live with honor and set an example for others to follow. The scout must also be loyal and devoted to his family, community, and country. The Eagle Scout has a servant's heart and stands as a protector of the others and continues his service to others throughout his life. A scout will always be prepared to stand as an example to others.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. So now we'll have readings of those proclamations.
Proclamation honoring Carl Taylor in achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, whereas the Boy Scouts of America has existed for more than a century and has created a strong foundation for leadership, service, and community for millions of young Americans since its inception. And whereas Boy Scouts lead by example and encourage each other to live by the values expressed by the Scout Oath and Scout Law, and whereas this rank of Eagle Scout is the highest achievement and rank attainable in the Boy Scouts of America with less than 5% of scouts achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Carl Taylor is a member of the Boy Scout Troop Eight sponsored by State Street United Methodist Church in Bristol, Virginia, and whereas Carl Taylor received the rank of Eagle Scout in 2022, and whereas for his community service project, Carl constructed a bus stop with a bench and roof for the use at the Highland View Apartments located in Abingdon, Virginia, and whereas Carl's dedication and hard work to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout demonstrates his determination to prepare himself for a meaningful, impactful, helpful, and productive role in society. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Bristol does hereby honor Carl Taylor of Boy Scout Troop Eight on his achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank of Boy Scouts, adopted this the 24th day of May, 2022. Proclamation honoring Michael Rowe in achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, whereas the Boy Scouts of America have existed for more than a century and has created a strong foundation for leadership, service, and community for millions of young Americans since its inception. Whereas Boy Scouts lead by example and encourage each other to live by the values expressed by the Scout Oath and Scout Law, and whereas the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest achievement and rank attainable in the Boy Scouts of America with less than 5% of scouts achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Michael Rowe is a member of Boy Scout Troop Eight sponsored by State Street United Methodist Church in Bristol, Virginia, and whereas Michael Rowe received the rank of Eagle Scout in 2022, whereas for his community service project, Michael constructed and placed three benches in the Black Forest area of Sugar Hollow Park that can be used by spectators at cross-country events, and whereas Michael's dedication and hard work to achieve the rank of Eagle Scout demonstrates his determination to prepare, prepare himself for a meaningful, impactful, and helpful, productive role in society. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of Bristol does hereby honor Michael Rowe of Boy Scout Troop Eight on his achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, the highest rank in Boy Scouts, adopted this the 24th day of May, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Let's give them a round of applause. And we need a motion and a second from our council.
I move for approval of the proclamations as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
I'll just say very briefly, you know, obviously, becoming an Eagle Scout is a, is a huge deal, so, so congratulations to, to Carl and to Michael. I don't believe Michael is here, but, but congratulations to you both. You all put in a lot of hours and a lot of hard work, and, you know, Carl, I know your dad does a lot of good for the city on his own, and, and, you know, so you're learning from the best, and, you know, and Michael's family I've known for a very long time, and they're very good people also, and you all did a lot of good stuff, and, and we really appreciate it. It's, it's a, it's a statement that Bristol gets, two brand-new Eagle Scouts right here from our city, right here in our city at the same year, so congratulations to you both.
And I'll just add to that, I agree with everything he said, but also, congratulations to you, Carl, and it was nice to meet you tonight. This is a huge achievement, and like I was telling you earlier, this is something you'll carry on throughout life. Even when you get my age, you're going to be talking about this and how proud you are. So congratulations to you and Michael, I'm very proud of you.
Again, I echo everything they said, you know, congratulations to you, Carl, and to Michael who's not here, but I know both of you are very fine young men, and, and this is a, a great achievement that you've had. I'm just glad that we can honor you in this way.
Yeah, congratulations, guys. So we have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnham?
Yes. And if, if Carl would like to meet me up front here, we'll take a quick picture. The next item of our regular agenda is a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission, zoning map amendment O2- zoning map amendment O2-2022 for 222 Oak Street. I hereby open the hearing and I ask the Planning Commission to open their hearing as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I opened the May twenty-fourth joint public hearing.
And no one signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members. Staff has received a petition to rezon property, this is actually city-owned property, located at 222 Oak Street. The request is to rezone from R2, single and two-family residential, to FRD, which is a newly created zone, it is the flexible redevelopment district. This zone came into existence with the zoning ordinance update about a year and a half ago. The process for rezoning in the Commonwealth of Virginia, section fifty dash seventeen of the city code details the process for an applicant to present a zoning map amendment, request to be heard by the Planning Commission and City Council. This item will first be considered by the Planning Commission at a regularly scheduled meeting. Following it to review, a joint public hearing will be held with the City Council in accordance with Virginia state statute. The item will then be considered again by the Planning Commission at a regu- regularly scheduled meeting to consider a recommendation to the City Council. The council will then approve or deny the request. If approved, there will be two ordinance readings by the council. The joint public hearing shall also require notice be provided to adjoining property owners pursuant to Virginia state statute, as well as advertised twice in the newspaper. The Planning Commission recommended the request for a joint public hearing at its April twenty, 2022 meeting. The request was advertised in the Bristol Herald Courier on Monday, May ninth, and Monday, May sixteenth, 2022. A sign was placed on the property on May tenth, 2022, and adjoining property owner notices were sent out May sixteenth, 2022. Prior city actions. Let me just go, and I'll come back to that. Prior city actions, this was one of many properties in the Solar Hill District that was rezoned from R3, which was a moderate-density residential, to R2 in 2001. Currently, the land use is vacant, there's a vacant building. The existing zoning designation as mentioned is R2. The future land use map designation is public, semi-public. The size of the site, it's four parcels and approximately point eight acres. Historically, it's been used for a school and for municipal offices. The existing vegetation is tree and grass. You can see the aerial photography of the property on the left, and you can see the zoning map on the right. It is in an R2 district, there is some manufacturing to the west, and then some V3 commercial on Cumberland Street to the south. You see some pictures of the property from the front and from the side. I'll go back to that here in a minute. It's estimated that the property has about two hundred and fifty linear feet of road frontage on Oak Street and two hundred and fifty on Miller Street, there are entrances to the property on both streets. So vehicular access is from both of these streets. The building is a contributing structure to the Solar Hill Historic District. It was constructed in or around nineteen hundred for use as a school, and an addition was constructed around nineteen thirty, that's that, the picture on the right, the side, the right part of it. After the school was closed, the building was used by the Bristol, Virginia School Board as its administrative offices, it has been vacant ever since they moved to their existing location. As I mentioned earlier, this property was rezoned in 2001 to R2. So the legislative authority and process for these zoning map amendments, section fifty dash one seven of the city code, and fifteen-two twenty-two eighty-five, fifteen-two twenty-two eighty-six of the Code of Virginia, allow for a process to amend the zoning ordinance, including zoning map amendments. The Code of Virginia states that the governing body made by ordinance amend the regulations, district boundaries, or classifications of property due to public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice. So for, under the staff analysis, compatibility with neighboring land uses and effects on the community character. The subject property is bordered by a mix of residential uses, it mentioned. The flexible redevelopment district zoning characteristics, the purpose of the FRD district is to encourage the creative redevelopment of certain previously developed properties by allowing a mix of compatible land uses in conformity with the city comprehensive plan and with an approved site plan. This may entail the reuse of existing structures or the redevelopment of former commercial or industrial sites for new construction or a combination of both activities. The intent is to rejuvenate economic, economic activity to relatively large tracts that have been vacant, thereby providing jobs and an increased tax base. It's a little small, but the listings up here on there and it is in your staff report, are all the different things that you can by right put into an FRD. Currently, the only thing you could put into the building now would be single or two-family residential, municipal offices which have been used there before, it's a very limited amount of uses you can use in that particular zoning district. This would expand what would be allowed in that zoning district and in that building specifically. So consistency with the 2017 adopted city comprehensive plan. The 2017 city plan addresses the Oak Tree, Oak Street School specifically on page one oh five, and it states that the city should continue to work with Bristol, Virginia Public Schools as they reassess their facility needs. Since the school has no further intent to use it for anything, the closed Oak Street School could be or should be repositioned for office uses, which are not allowed under the current R2 zoning. If that is not considered market viable, then residential uses compatible with the surrounded neighborhood may be appropriate. Current R2 zoning restricts this goal, and the property would be better served with the FRD zoning designation. The future land use map, which was updated and revised in 2019, shows the subject property as public, semi-public. In the future land use chapter of the comprehensive plan on page thirty-four, it states that these types of land uses are composed of institutions and community facilities that define Bristol's quality of life. This includes public facilities such as government facilities and public schools, as well as private facilities such as religious institutions and nonprofits. If an existing public or semi-public use closes or relocates, as it did in this case, that parcel's future use is not limited to only public or semi-public uses. Reuse or redevelopment should occur that blends with the existing fabric of the area. As far as impacts of the potential rezoning, as far as local traffic, since the proposed use is not currently known, that would be, you know, taken a look at once a detailed site plan would be submitted. Natural resources, there should be no adverse effects on natural resources. City staff would require all environmental-related permitting to be obtained and approved prior to development, including soil and erosion control, stormwater management. Connection to public water and sewer will be required by Bristol, Virginia Utilities, that connection exists currently. The effect on public facilities, the school system, the proposed map amendment should not impact the local school system. Parks and Recreation, it should not impact the local parks and recreation facilities and services. Emergency services, according to, I did have a staff comment from Fire Marshal Eric Blevins, the property was used as an office building when occupied as the school administrative building, so the mix of compatible land use designation to encourage redevelopment would be acceptable. The fire department can maintain the service level at this location that was present when it was operating as an office building. Water, wastewater, and electrical utilities, Richard Atkins of Bristol, Virginia Utilities commented, I have no electrical issues with this request. The applicant or developer of the property will need to pay the cost of extending sanitary sewer to provide the proposed project if needed. Utility plans will be reviewed by BVU and city engineering staff in the site plan process if required. Public transit, the rezoning should not adversely affect transit resources. Government services, garbage collection services would, would be addressed during the site plan review process. I did have a comment from Economic Development Specialist Mac Chapman, I believe the rezoning would provide more potential for development of the property. And I just wanted to bring you up to speed on one other thing, we do have some funding from a grant to do some asbestos and lead abatement on that property, and that should be starting within the next thirty to sixty days.
Thank you, Jay. And again, no one signed up for public comment for this item, so I will go ahead and hereby close our hearing, and I'll ask the Planning Commission to close their hearing as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I close the May twenty-fourth joint public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Shue. The next item of our agenda is appointment to the Regional Improvement Commission. No one signed up for public comment for this item, staff report.
Counsel, this action was on the May tenth, 2022 consent agenda and was tabled until May twenty-four, 2022. This item is for the appointment of an individual to serve a two-year term on the Regional Improvement Commission established by section fifty-eight point one hyphen forty-one oh seven point one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended. The purpose of the commission is to, one, receive disbursements made to it, two, establish funding priorities for the member localities related to improvements in the areas of education, transportation, and public safety, and three, make annual payments divided equally among the jurisdictions to fund the established priorities as determined by the commission. The item was previously heard on May tenth, 2022 and was tabled until today.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move to appoint City Manager Eads to the Regional Improvement Commission.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any council discussion?
I will say very briefly, so I, I was the person that tabled this two weeks ago. I had no objection to the city manager's serve, I just wanted some more information on it, so, you know, we, we received quite a bit of information, I appreciate the, the clerk for providing that. As far as term, the scope of duties of the office, and I believe after discussing it with, with Councilmember Naev, that almost every other locality has appointed their, either their county administrator or city manager, so this is in line with, with what the norm seems to be, so, so, so I, I cleared up my concerns, so I have, I have no more concerns about it.
If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. The next item of our agenda is an update on the falls development and the landfill. We have a few folks that signed up for public comment for this item, and Ms. Nofflin, I know you wrote in landfill, did you want to speak on this item or the next item with the budget? Yes, go ahead. Sure, come on up.
City council members, I'm Jackie Nofflin at one forty-three McArthur Circle, Bristol, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of the Bristol Area Ministry Alliance, which I am the president. I would like to start out by saying that we think that we thank Mr. O'Neil Osborne for attending our meeting on last Friday, the Virginia Inner Faith Power and Light, the Sierra Club, and Bama, Bristol Area Ministry Alliance. That's the name of our group, they have taken the leadership to move forward with what DEQ has suggested, and we thank him for opening the door for communication. We also would like to say, thank you to the City Council for agreeing to open up that communication, Mr. Mayor, I saw your interview as well, and all the things that are required, you said that they were going to comply to that. A lot of people have asked the question, why has Bristol Area Ministry Alliance stepped up? We stepped up first because of the air purifiers, we're providing over a thousand air purifiers, we're working on the tenth distribution now, coming in solely by donations, Sam Wellington at First Presbyterian has headed that for our group, and we're working on to continue with that. Last week, I also met with Senator Warner's office, Senator Kane's office, advocating that we get funding for Bristol, there's monies flying all over the state, and we will make sure that it gets down past Roanoke, all the way down to Bristol, and we're going to continue advocating in, in that area as well. My other thing that I wanted to make mention of was that last week, a couple of weeks ago, our last meeting, as I usually do attend most of the City Council meetings, the budget came out, I remember years ago, like Ms. Marty had already alluded to, the budget came, comes out, the managers make the plan, set it out, lay it out, it's hard, it's hard to digest, it's hard to take, and, but when you come in and make those changes and so forth, we can't blame management on those changes. There is one thing that I do see that we need to continue doing, any of the entities like Believe in Bristol, or Country Music Museum, or places like that, that we're getting revenue back from, or we're getting around the clock back from, and it is helping the city, then we should continue to support those areas. I would have liked to have seen the new sheriff, it is four, and instead of two, which may be the, and I think that you were in agreement with it too, but we all know that usually when something is cut, the first thing is cut is salaries. So I hate it to see that happen when we need them the most. The other thing is, I wanted to say that the work that's been done as far as this budget is concerned, has been a lot of time in, I'd like to compliment that, but we have to remember, we didn't get out of that bad situation at nineteen million to the good because we did not do hard thing and make hard decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nofflin. The next person that signed up for public comment is Mr. Joel Kellogg.
Well, since you didn't take my advice, I have no idea what we're gonna talk about, so at this time, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg, the next person that signed up is Mr. Chris Knup.
Good evening, everybody, hope everybody's having a good night. Bill, you said something there a minute ago, we do have a lot of good things here in Bristol, Virginia. These young people, congratulations on them. But we've got a big shadow here too, and it's killing us. Well, there's a few things, but we won't get into one right here on the landfill. I heard some comments, maybe some people's thinking, things are starting to look better, not smelling as bad. I don't know what part of town they're in, and I'm glad they're not smelling it, thank goodness, I mean, if you don't smell it, that's great. I had my kids come in from up north here a couple of weeks ago, and this is bad, this kinda gets me mad. I mean, every one of you's got kids and grandkids, this is gonna piss you off. But when your child and your grandchildren say, Dad, Papa, we can't stand to come down here, I live right across the street from it, Tennessee side gets hit hard. I don't know what we're gonna do, I've heard Jackie here, we've got money coming in, and another thing I like, our communication. Randy, you're a lawyer and you're our manager, our communication, Anthony, is very important. Somehow or another, we need to step up and have better communication. I don't care how it is, through whoever it is, we need better communication. As citizens of Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee, it's just not one side, it's both sides. And it takes both sides to make it happen, but you've got a lot of good citizens, we pay our taxes just like you guys do, well, Randy, you're in Abingdon.
I have property here in Bristol.
I have property here in Bristol.
You pay property tax. I pay plenty of that, too. And I had a business for years with my trucks, and I paid plenty of personal property taxes over the years. Guys, the main thing is communication. Can we step up and do it? Randy, can we step up and have more public?
Since you brought communication up, let's just talk about communication. I mean, this all started December of twenty-twenty, and we had meetings, items of discussion on the agenda. I would say, if not every single agenda item last year, probably seventy-five percent of agendas had communications in regards to the landfill. In either April or May, I began having meetings with citizens in this council chambers before meetings until the point that it got in September to where my life was being threatened and people's lives at landfill was being threatened based on the situation of the landfill. And I had to stop that. I was on Facebook until about September, trying to communicate with people about what was going on. And I would get threats via Facebook about on my life or on my property. And so we have a website. We've had a website dedicated to the landfill communications since either late April, early May of twenty-twenty-one, where we push out updates as it relates to the landfill. This is a hard truth, and nobody here's going to like it, and I can't help it. But there are only certain things that we can update people on. There is not an update that we can give update every single day. I mean, there are things that are going to take time. And in regards to my landfill update, there's not going to be a significant update tonight. Basically, the only thing I'm going to go over is the landfill findings from the expert panel and advise everyone that we will be responding to DEQ by July sixth as to how we plan to move forward. But we have attempted to communicate as much information as we can about this landfill as soon as we get it. If there's something about that landfill that is imperative for the public to know about, it is on our website as soon as we can get it on the website. And I know, Mr. Nup, where you live, I know exactly where you live. And I know that it impacts you probably as much as anybody in Bristol, Virginia or Bristol, Tennessee. And I apologize for everything that everybody's gone over, had to deal with for the past fifteen, sixteen months. But there is not one thing, at least according to the experts, that have led to this situation. It's an elevated landfill gas temperature situation. Even in their own report, they say there's not enough data that has been provided that they can make certain determinations on. And so over the next year, we're going to continue to get data and give this to the experts, give it to our consultants and engineers so that they can come to some sort of conclusion as to how we move forward. The landfill's not closing tomorrow, it's not closing a month from now, it may not close six months from now because there are certain things. And their own report says not to close it until we get things under control.
Yeah, it has to be under control.
It's got to be under control.
I agree with that.
And I mean, if we close it before it gets under control, we're doing nothing but creating environmental disaster for this city to deal with ten years from now. And we've got to fix it, and we've got to fix it right. And as much as I would love to communicate every single day about that landfill, there are just certain things or certain time that there is nothing to communicate. All last fall, from September through December, my guess is we had at least an update every other day during that time period about that landfill because there was a lot of things going on at that landfill at that time. And right now, we're in a situation where our experts, DEQ, everybody is trying to absorb what the expert panel has suggested to do and come up with a solution. Once a solution is come up with by our engineers, we've got to present that solution to DEQ. And then DEQ is going to have to sign off on it before we move forward. So there's going to be a lot of things that's going to take a lot of time. My council's aware that it's going to take time. And if they sit here and tell you it's not going to take time, I'll just flat out tell you they're lying to you. But every one of them know that it's going to take time.
I agree with taking time.
And unfortunately, it's a situation that none of us want to deal with because I can tell you right now, this city was on a trajectory like no other trajectory we were on until this landfill hit. I mean, things were going according to plan, economic development was happening, people were starting to move again and come into the city and visit the city. I mean, this city was on the way up. And then we have had a monumental disaster of a situation at that landfill that has brought everything to a halt.
I agree. And the mismanagement of it's what brought it to a halt, too, over the years. And, you know, you didn't start this. I was at this landfill, and I know I'm out of time, man.
When I took up your time.
I was here at the beginning of this landfill. I helped with the construction of this landfill. It was told twenty-some year ago it wasn't. But anyways, if we could, in a lot of things, turn a blind eye. In as far as the public and everything, yeah, there's been a lot of harsh things. How's it say, forgive and forget?
I don't forget, I don't forget anyone that sits here and says they're going to kill me. I don't forgive that. I'll forgive it, but I don't forgive. And the next thing, when people call me a liar, when a pastor calls me a liar sitting right here in this conference room in September of twenty-twenty-one, I've got real problems with that. And I've tried my best to communicate honest, open communication to this public for the past year and a half in regards to this landfill. And it's stuff that people don't want to hear. But it's the honest truth. You name me one thing where I have lied to the community about this landfill, and I'll own up to it. But I have been open and honest and transparent about this landfill since day one. Now, many people may not like what I had to say, but it doesn't mean I'm lying to you.
I've said a lot of things people don't like what I said.
Exactly.
It is what it is. I've got thick skin. I was a salesman for twenty years.
Right.
So hard feelings, I can get over it.
Right.
Time heals. But anyway, my time's up, and I appreciate the extra time. We just need to continue going. And like I said, I don't know who's going around saying, I don't smell it, but it's still there, and you guys know. Appreciate, thank you, good night.
Mr. Nup, thank you. And this isn't really a time for us to go back and forth, but I did want to say I do appreciate you coming here, and I appreciate what you said about communication. I do, I think all of us agree that we all want to try to improve and continue communication going forward. So, yeah, we're going to work on that, and I appreciate you coming here.
And I'm on line with that. I mean, I don't want that people think we don't want to communicate. We do. It's just, there's times that we can communicate things that are going on and times that there's nothing.
Oh, I agree with that. There's, I mean, I know that, I know that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next person that signed up for public comment is Ms. Becky Evenden.
I did bring copies for you all tonight.
Thank you.
Becky Evenden, two-ten Race Day Center Drive, Bristol, Tennessee. I brought a prepared statement, and I wasn't expecting the exchange that just happened. But I would take issues with some of that, but I'm here to talk to you all in council tonight. Good evening, I'm here about the landfill, not the falls. When standing before you, I try to bring solution-oriented suggestions that I hope you will act upon. Tonight, I want to address the expert panel report on the landfill and communication going forward. Last month, the expert panel convened by DEQ published their recommendations for the city's landfill. I've read that report several times and have spent a number of hours explaining its contents to our community. I'd like to highlight several points from the report. First, the experts made an extremely grave assessment of the landfill. It's likely to get worse without immediate intervention. Second, a geomembrane cover will be critical to getting the situation under control. You need the thick membrane to keep storm water out of the landfill, but you'll also need it in order for the gas wells to operate effectively and safely. If you only sink money into gas wells without getting a geomembrane on top, I believe you will see expensive wells fail again and again. Third, the report addressed the need for communication. They urged a general community outreach program. They also mentioned that you will need a lot of data in order to sell sharp members of your community on your plans. And from my perspective, it has to be data that we can trust. Here's where we have major problems, trust and communication. I'm just going to lay out for you exactly what I'd like to see from a communication perspective going forward, and I know this resonates with others in the community. I'd like to see Mayor Farnum lead frequent public meetings where landfill updates are shared and residents' concerns and questions are answered directly. I'd like to see DEQ and SCS engineers at those forums. And from our conversations with DEQ, I believe their attendance is very possible. I'd like a dedicated liaison from SCS engineers to answer technical questions and to provide open and transparent access to all monitoring data related to the landfill. Finally, I'd like to see the communication strategy of the city shift from a criminal defense mindset to transparent, honest with nothing held back, and empathetic. This is your best path forward, and it's how you rebuild trust. I'll leave you with this final thought. You have local residents, especially volunteers with Hope for Bristol, whose questions and oversight can help you reach a solution more quickly. We have outside experts at our fingertips who give us feedback on the data we see and on the work done by your landfill consultants. If fixing the problem is the utmost priority, we are an asset to the community and to you. Please help us do our best by doing your best with transparency and communication. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Evenden, and thank you for providing this, too. That's the last person that signed up for public comment for this item. Staff report.
Counsel, I want to give you an update on the falls development and the landfill, and specifically in regards to the falls development. On May eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the Attorney General of Virginia responded to the city's request for an attorney general opinion. Last year, the owner and developer of a parcel of property within the falls requested permission to build residential apartment units within the falls. As city attorney, it was my legal opinion residential units could be built within the falls. The attorney general also appined, quote, "The city of Bristol may authorize the construction of residential units within the falls, a development of regional impact pursuant to Section fifty-eight point one hyphen six oh eight point three, paragraph B, and continue to receive sales tax revenue generated by transactions occurring within the falls." So this item was tabled at one point last year. I would expect us to continue to have some internal discussions as to how to move forward and then make a determination in, either in public or if we just choose not to go forward, we will just let the developer know that we would choose not to go forward with those apartments. So I would expect us to make that sometime over the next month. I've had some conversations with the developer, and he is anxious to get started if the city would so allow. Next, I would like to talk about the expert panel findings as it relates to the landfill. We received this expert panel findings on April the twenty-fifth, and then on April the twenty-sixth, underwent surgery and have been out of the office since that time. The findings are as follows. Odors are believed to be primarily emanating from the landfill quarry sidewalls, suggesting that the sidewall liner has been compromised. Odors are also likely emanating from the landfill surface due to inadequate interim soil cover material. Two, engineers' measures to seal the sidewalls and mitigate the release of odors appears feasible. A site-specific design approach for sidewall emission reduction needs to be developed and tested before implementing site-wide. Air intrusion, number three, air intrusion caused by insufficient daily cover use in operation of the landfill gas collection system appears to be resulting in non-ideal concentrations of oxygen in the waste mass. Four, the landfill is exhibiting characteristics of an elevated temperature landfill, including low relative methane content in landfill gas, large and rapid settlements, and the production of highly unusual odors. Left unabated, ETLF's conditions will continue to continue, well, conditions will likely continue to develop over time. Five, there is insufficient data for diagnosing the state of the ETLF conditions within the landfill. And this is what Ms. Evenden brought up. And based on the conversations I've had with the expert panel, that data would need to be collected probably for a period of a year so they could make some more recommendations as it relates to the elevated temperature landfill. A data monitoring program should be implemented concurrently with and in a complementary manner to the remedial strategy for controlling odors and the associated ETLF condition. Number six, the landfill is exhibiting differential spatial settlement with the greatest net settlement observed in areas where landfill operations are minimal. The rate of settlement in twenty-twenty-one is greater than settlement in the latter half of twenty-twenty, which suggests an acceleration in the rate of settlement. Settlement of this nature is characteristic of an ETLF. Remedial actions will need to address anticipated settlement of the landfill. Number eight, waste beneath the landfill surface is saturated with leachate, which is known to contribute to ETLF conditions, including the generation of odors. Number nine, prevention of additional infiltration of storm water and removal of leachate from the waste mass to the extent practical must be addressed through engineered remedial actions. Number ten, benzene is not believed to be derived from an external source of the contamination based on currently available data. Benzene is likely being derived from the waste mass, but the mechanism of production or release is unknown due to insufficient data. So the recommendations for odor mitigation and data needs are as follows. There are ten recommendations from the panel. Test and construct a sidewall odor mitigation system around the landfill perimeter that will be designed and constructed to mitigate landfill gases emanating from the landfill quarry sidewalls. Number two, improve the performance of existing gas extraction wells, including minimizing air intrusion pathways to the landfill cover. Additional gas extraction wells will be needed to reduce emissions and temperatures. Number three, identify and eliminate to the extent practical any landfill gas fugitive emissions at the landfill surface. Weekly monitoring activities of gas emissions at the landfill surface will be required. Number four, install settlement plates and conduct monthly surveys to document the locations and rates of settlement in the waste mass. Number five, install and monitor a dedicated system of thermocouples in the waste mass to monitor landfill temperatures for greater spatial resolution, horizontal and vertical, and to provide data at a greater frequency. Number six, install at least five deep dedicated monitoring wells to enable sampling and characterization of leachate and measurement of temperature profiles in the waste. Number seven, install and operate large diameter dual-phase extraction wells for removal of gas and leachate. Treatment requirements for extracted leachate must be determined. Number eight, install a temporary geosynthetic cover over the entire landfill. This will require substantial grading of the existing landfill surface. To direct runoff to the southeast corner of the landfill where it is expected, a stormwater management pond can be constructed to manage storm water that is collected on top of the geomembrane cover. Number nine, develop and implement an effective and sustainable stormwater management plan and settlement management plan for the landfill. Number ten, the panel recommended an active community outreach program to communicate strategies, provide status, progress reports, and citizen feedback. Counsel, SCS engineers has a copy of this report. They've had a copy of this report since April twenty-fifth. They have had discussions with DEQ. They are internally discussing how to move forward with these recommendations, and they will provide us an update shortly. They have also met with BVU as it relates to the benzene and the benzene mitigation. This process is going to take time, and just as I mentioned a few moments ago, these things cannot be implemented overnight. And many of the things you saw, at least according to the expert panel, is it's a test, especially the sidewall liner sealing. They said test an area before we move on with full sealing. So a test area may or may not work based on current known engineering solutions. So it may take us additional one or two, three, four times to get a solution that works for that sidewall liner. DEQ does, is requesting an action plan be submitted to them on or before July sixth. SCS plans on having that action plan to them on or before July sixth as well.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. The next item of our agenda is ordinances, second reading. Second reading of the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. And no one signed up for public comment for this item. Staff report.
Counsel, the public hearing for the budget ordinance took place on April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two at the city council meeting. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Bristol Herald Courier on April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. And the first reading of the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three was at the regularly scheduled meeting of the city council on May tenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Eads.
So in regards to the changes in the budget that the council has suggested, you can see here on the chart that Believe in Bristol, the change was twenty-three thousand to revised budget amount of fifty thousand and the BCM increase of twenty-three thousand for revised budget amount of fifty thousand. And here's where those funds will come from. Seven thousand will come from my contingency fund. Twelve thousand will come from savings on insurance and on equipment. Three thousand on professional liability insurance, and twenty-four thousand on property and contents insurance. Next, there was an increase for salaries and wages. And this was for the Sheriff's Department. So the salaries and wages increase was eighty-eight thousand two oh four, revised budget amount of nine thirty-five eight seventy-one. FICA increased by six thousand seven hundred and forty-eight dollars for a revised budget amount of seventy-two thousand five thirteen. VRS retirement increased by sixteen thousand five forty-eight for a revised budget amount of one seventy-five five seventy-one. Health and dental insurance increased by seventeen thousand nine oh eight for a revised budget amount of one seventy-seven four eleven. And the VRS increase of eleven hundred and eighty-two dollars, which revised budget amount of twelve thousand five forty-one. Total changes for the Sheriff's Department is one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, one hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and ninety dollars.
one hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and a revised budget amount of one million three hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars. The changes, those, those funds will, well, I'll get to that in a second. Changes to administration of the recommended budget for the judicial alternative sentencing program. You can see here, I won't go line by line, but the total local cost is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars is what we will be putting back into the budget for the JAS program. And then finally, the total change of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that is coming from the transportation, jail transportation costs of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand fifty-five dollars that will cover the, that will revise the budget amount down to one hundred and thirty thousand nine forty-five for transportation costs under the police department budget. We will then come back in July, at the first meeting in July, and restore that piece of the budget at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move for second reading of the budget ordinance by caption only.
A second.
Okay. A motion and a second for the second reading by caption only. Is there any council discussion?
I want to ask Ms. Bradlin a question. So thank y'all for doing the work and finding where this would come from based on our discussion. For the JAS program, the amounts there, is that basically what was previous year budget except for the five percent increase all employees are getting?
For the local piece, yes. We will have to come back the first meeting in July and add some other revenue and some expenditures will be added there as well. We couldn't do that and keep the budget ordinance the same because it would change total revenues. So there will be a piece, it's less than ninety thousand dollars of work release fees and some other revenue we'll add. And then we'll add that on the expenditure side as well.
Yeah. I, I was just more that it's basically what they had this year except for the...
Yes, it's what they requested, yes. And the only major change there is the five percent increase. Sorry if I answered the wrong question.
No. No, that's good.
Go ahead.
I mean, I, we talked about this last time and, and talked about it again, but before we vote, I mean, a lot of people talked about the uncertainty and I think, as I mentioned, this is a transition. And, you know, there is a lot of uncertainty, one which I think we didn't talk about last time, but I was noticing that hopefully next week, the Commonwealth, the General Assembly will come together and come up with a budget. We don't even know exactly what the state is going to fund for some of these things. So that's another uncertainty that we face. But I think, you know, moving is, is a transition out of the pandemic, you know, is this the perfect budget? No, there's, there's a lot of things I don't like about it. There's a lot of things I would still like to see. I, I think there are things I know we're going to come back. I mean, while it was great to, as Ms. Naufman said, to help fund BCM and Believe in Bristol, we, we didn't put additional funding to the CVB and my guess is we'll be back in four to six months trying to deal with that issue. You know, I'm sure as we get into recommendations of the landfill, we'll be back dealing with how to maybe move some funds around there. I mean, there's just a lot of things. There's positions, just talked about, you know, a city attorney and, and while that would be great, I don't know where that's coming from. A public information officer, I know a couple of us mentioned that is our goals. Code enforcement is brought up about VI and stuff. That would be great to have another code enforcement to help, you know, some of these things. But I don't see us right now getting to where, I mean, these are things that, where we know we need to go, but I don't see us getting there now without doing more harm. And I'm glad that you, you were able last meeting to, to find ways to do this. I'm glad we, we got the JAS program back. I'm glad that the sheriff has a couple more deputies, you know, that, that'll help. But I think we'll still be talking about public safety, police, sheriff, fire. I mean, and some of these things with the salaries, while it's great, we put that in. I, we're going to be talking about that for the next year and couple of years to come. I mean, we just got a plan on doing that, but I think these are, are some good first steps. And, you know, again, i- is it perfect? No, but it's good. And I remember somebody once saying, if you went through the budget process and everybody walked away happy, you probably didn't do your job right. And I kind of got that feeling this year. I think, I don't think people are extremely happy about what come out. They would like to see another things, but I think we, we did a fair job and, and did some compromise and some back and forth. So, you know, we could talk more about it, but I just really don't know that, given our revenues, where we're able to make any of these changes that, that I think some of us would like to see. It's just we're kind of constrained right now.
Okay. I'll just, I'll, I was just going to say, budget process is a hard process. It goes through many different versions and we're all looking at it and you're all looking at it and there's a lot of things being pulled in different directions. So just, just to kind of reiterate, you know, this budget is a balanced budget. It includes raises for all city employees, especially for our police and fire, those first responders are getting a, a larger bump as well. More funding for our school system, we're, we're funding them more than we did the previous year. And there's, there's no increases in taxes to be able to do that. I think where we were as a city, you know, if you had a crystal ball and five years ago, you said that we could be voting on these things in our budget, I think you'd say, oh, that's, that's pretty good. So again, it's a hard process and a long process and this has been a tough one, but I think we're taking steps in the right direction. So. Um, oh, do you want to, yeah, you want to read that?
Before we go ahead and you call for the vote, pursuant to Virginia Code, section two point two dash three, one one five H, I, Bill Hartley, I'm an officer of the city of Bristol, who is required to declare his interest pursuant to subdivision B one of section two point two dash three, one one two, that I shall declare my interest by stating the City Council is voting on the fiscal year twenty-three budget ordinance. My wife is employed by the Bristol-Virginia Public Schools. I am a member of a group that could be affected by the transaction due to my wife's employment with the Bristol-Virginia Public Schools. I am able to participate in the transaction fairly objectively and in the public interest.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second for the second reading of the budget ordinance by caption only. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. A reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, making general fund, community development block grant fund, solid waste disposal enterprise fund, local-funded capital projects fund, state and federal-funded capital projects fund, Commonwealth Attorney Federal Revenue Sharing Fund, Transit Enterprise Fund, asset forfeiture fund, COVID-nineteen Federal Funds Fund, School Operating Fund, School Textbook Fund, School Food Service Fund, and School Local Capital Projects Fund appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three in the following amounts. General Fund, fifty-nine million, eight hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. Community Development Block Grant Fund, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Solid Waste Disposal Enterprise Fund, seven million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Local Funded Capital Projects Fund, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. State and Federal Funded Capital Projects Fund, seven million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Commonwealth Attorney Federal Revenue Sharing Fund, ninety-five thousand dollars. Transit Enterprise Fund, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, thirty-six dollars. Asset Forfeiture Fund, one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred dollars. COVID-nineteen Federal Funds Fund, ten million, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. School Operating Fund, forty-seven million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. School Textbook Fund, one million, two thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. School Food Service Fund, two million, five hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and two dollars. School Local Capital Projects Fund, six hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. And regulating payments out of the city treasury and also fixing the tax rate on real and personal property for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. So now we're looking for a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance.
I move for final adoption of the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. The next item of our agenda is the FY twenty-two quarterly financial update. No one signed up for public comment, so staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. This is the finance update for the third quarter of fiscal year twenty-two, data as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. This data is prepared on a cash basis. Revenues the city received and expenditures the city paid, and this is unaudited data. The general fund summary with a budget of fifty-eight point seven million, revenues of forty-four million, seventy-five percent of budget, expenditures of forty-one point four million, seventy-one percent of budget, for a fund surplus of two point five million dollars. Solid Waste Disposal summary with a budget of eight point eight million, revenues of six million, sixty-eight percent of budget, expenditures of five point three million, sixty-one percent of budget, for a balance of six hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars. The local capital projects fund with a budget of one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, revenues of one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, one hundred percent of budget, and these are the general fund local transfers, expenditures of eighty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars, fifty percent of budget for a balance of eighty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. We do anticipate those monies will be expended by year end. The state and federal capital projects fund with a budget of six point five million, revenues of two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, three percent of budget, expenditures of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, three percent of budget, for a small fund surplus there of twelve thousand. The, the budget variance there is due to the timing of those road projects. They just did not get started as originally anticipated for various reasons. And our transit fund with a budget of five hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, revenues of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, fifty-eight percent of budget, expenditures of three hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine twenty-five, fifty-seven percent of budget for a small fund surplus there as well of six thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. And here's the general fund revenue summary. Of the forty-four million dollars received by the general fund, thirty million dollars is from local sources, eleven point six million dollars is from state sources, two point four million dollars is from federal sources. So our financial data graphs, fiscal year eighteen is shown in orange, fiscal year nineteen is shown in gray, fiscal year twenty is shown in yellow, fiscal year twenty-one in red, and fiscal year twenty-two in green. You can see our local sales and use tax is up from all periods. Our cigarette tax is up from fiscal year eighteen but down slightly from all other years shown. The lodging taxes are up from all years presented, as are the restaurant meal taxes, and we like to point out that the, the shape of the lodging tax and the restaurant meal tax is very similar. This is what our sales tax revenue with a budget of three point eight five million dollars looks like as it is received by the city. The blue is the three-year average and the orange is the current year data. Sales tax runs two months behind, meaning that revenues received in the month, month of March are actually for the month of January. This is the city's meals tax with a budget of five point two million, the largest of our other local taxes, as it's received by the city. And revenues here are one month behind, meaning that March collections are for the month of February. You can see the, the flow of how those monies are received. And this is the city's lodging tax with, with a budget of one point two eight seven million as it's received by the city. And like our meal taxes, March collections run one month behind, they are for the month of February. So our general fund expenditure summary for the year, if all expenditures were earned, were expended evenly throughout the year, the benchmark here would be seventy-five percent at March thirty-first. Government administration is at sixty-six percent. Judicial administration is at seventy percent. Public safety is at sixty-three percent. Public works is at sixty-six percent. Health, welfare, and social services is at seventy-three percent. Education is at one hundred percent due to, due to the timing of certain state and federal reimbursements for fiscal year twenty-two, primarily related to their ESER expenditures. Parks, Recreation, and Cultural is at sixty-nine percent. Community development is at forty-seven percent, way below that seventy-five percent benchmark, and that's related to some significant flow-through monies related to American merchant and some grant expenditures that have just not been expended yet due to the timing of those. Non-departmental is at forty-five percent. Debt is at seventy-three percent and transfers is at sixty-six percent. For total expenditures, at seventy-one percent or below that seventy-five percent budget benchmark. And I'll go back to non-departmental there. It is down due to the revenue sharing payment, Washington County. As of March thirty-first, one half of that, one half of the budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand was due and, and only a small amount had been paid toward that, less than sixty thousand, I believe. So that's why that is well below the benchmark. Transitioning to solid waste, the cash balance in the solid waste operating account is three point six seven nine million dollars, which sounds like a lot of money, but please keep in mind that the solid waste disposal fund carries a twelve million dollar liability on its audited financial statements. Nine months into the year, once again, the benchmark percentage is seventy-five percent. Disposal revenue is at sixty-six percent, trending slightly negative. Collection revenue is at eighty-three percent due to the timing of a prior year receipt. Non-operating revenue is at fifty-five percent, and this is primarily due to general fund transfers that have not been moved or had not been moved as, as of March thirty-first due to the timing of certain projects that they're funding. Disposal expenditures are at fifty-seven percent, primarily trending down due to personnel vacancies and due to those large projects I just mentioned that were not completed for payment as of March thirty-first. Collection expenditures are at fifty-four percent due primarily to the timing of certain lease payments in the collection department. Net expenditures are at eighty-two percent due to, due to the timing of the debt payments. And keep in mind, when we talk about the solid waste fund, we always like to point out that debt is thirty percent of the original budget for this fiscal year for that fund. So almost a third of the budget is for debt payments. Falls phases two and three update budgeted revenues, total seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Year-to-date revenues as of March thirty-first, six hundred thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars or seventy-eight percent. The debt allocated to the falls for fiscal year twenty-two is three million dollars. Those are the, the payments. And it's at sixty-seven percent at March thirty-first, right in line with our debt schedule. The revenue sharing payment, once again, half of that had been paid as of March thirty-first and that was at fifty thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. So the budgeted deficit for the year is two point six million dollars and the year-to-date deficit at March thirty-first is one point four million dollars. So it looks like from these numbers that the deficit for the year will be actually less than the two point six million dollars, but still substantial. And here's the information on the city's upcoming debt, debt schedule. And I have been, as a reminder, I have been asked by members of the Finance Committee to present this information quarterly so that decision-makers and the public sees this information regularly. This is citywide general obligation bonded debt. It is backed by the full faith and credit of the city of Bristol. What you can see in the first two columns of this data, of this chart, is that citywide debt payments for the bonds will increase to over seven point five million dollars through fiscal year twenty-eight and then the shortfall related to that increase. Then detailed out is the previous refinanced savings from fiscal year twenty-eighteen and how that was, that has been used in the current, this is the last year that that was used in the current budget cycle. So then that gives you a net payment of which a portion of the one million dollars that previously had been annually budgeted to build up our reserves and it's going to have to be used to pay the debt at, at this point going forward. And then as the revenue sharing payment expires, those monies can be used toward the debt escalation. The unexpended debt service reserve funds that council committed in June of twenty nineteen- The unexpended debt service reserve funds that counsel committed in June of 2019, June of 2020, and June of 2021 totaling 3 million will also be used to offset the escalating payments. And I say this every time I present this. This is a lot of, of numbers and a lot of words. So what this schedule really tells us is that under the current debt service budget plan, the plan funds the debt service into fiscal year '27. This is the city's current written plan, and it is a very manageable plan. This will change somewhat at the next presentation when you see this for the June 30. It'll be presented most likely in August. As interest earned on the reserve funds will be allocated. If you look at the committed reserve funds, that totals 3 million. Once we complete this fiscal year, we have that final interest number. We'll go ahead and allocate that as well. And then in June, counsel will have the option of allocating any of the revenue sharing savings realized in this fiscal year to the debt service plan. And if counsel chooses to do that, I, I feel like it will be enough to get us through fiscal year '27 with the current debt service plan that we have with no additional new revenues required through then. And I think Mr. Eads would agree with me that there was a time when that seemed insurmountable. And, and it's still going to go up after fiscal year '27, but we will have a plan in place through fiscal year '27 that gives the city some time for projects to develop. And the operating cash balance at March 31, 2022 was 23,634,444. And counsel has asked that I show five years of historical data when, when presenting the operating cash balance. So one year ago, that balance was at 20.6 million. Two years ago, March 31, 2020, the cash balance was at 17.6 million. 2019, it was at 16 million. 2018, 9.9 million. And in 2017, the balance at March 31 was 5.9 million. And that, you know, you can see clearly the, the efforts counsel has made with city manager directives to shore up that cash balance and, and provide stability in the operating cash balance for the city has been successful. Also, we're pleased to report in the reserve fund or account, it's not really a fund, in the reserve account, a little over 1.4 million. And in the debt reserve, a little over 3 million and 68,000 of available interest at March 31 that we can use toward that plan. And then you see the historical TAN information there. The last time that the city had to access the TAN to pay its operating bills was in fiscal year '17, 1.7 million. And that's also when the cash balance at March 31 was 5.9 million. And then the year before that, 2.4 million, 6.7 million. And then going back to fiscal year '14, the city was borrowing 7.6 million to pay its operating expenses. So clearly, I think this slide shows the progression that, that the city has made. And counsel, that concludes the presentation of the financial data as of March 31, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradlin. Is it okay if there are any questions from the counsel for you?
Yes, sir.
I had, I had one quick one, but... I was just going to ask the slide that shows the debt service. Could we go back to that for a second?
Yes, sir.
I just had a quick question. Over on the far left side, we know the debt payments are increasing over the next few years. From, from that slide on, from 2028, say, through the end through 2042, is it always around the seven and a half million? Or does it fluctuate some going forward after that, the way it's structured?
It does fluctuate some, but if it goes up in one year, it goes down in the next. So if we can get to the 7.5, it is reasonable to think we can always maintain that. Meaning, one year it might be seven, one year it might be eight. But if we take the savings from the 7.5 to the seven, we're going to be able to meet the eight.
Okay.
My, my question was about the state-funded capital projects. Are we going to be able to roll those over, carry them forward?
Yes, the revenue for those, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Counsel, I just want to make a clarification on a statement I made a little bit ago in regards to communications to citizens. I'd made a comment about a pastor. I just want to clarify that that pastor is not Reverend Naughton that I was talking about. Reverend Naughton has been nothing but, she's been a listening advocate for the city in regards to this situation. She is, truly understands, I think, the city's financial situation and where we're at. And I think she truly understands that we're doing everything within our financial power to correct the issues at the landfill. And I think she's been a tremendous advocate for us, for Senators Warner and Senator Kane, and even our local delegates as well. So by no means was that comment directed toward Reverend Naughton.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Can I add one thing, just so that counsel and the public is aware? The administrative, administration recommended budget is what's available online now. In the next week to 10 days, we will, hopefully sooner than that, but we will get final books out to counsel and the PDF put on the website. So that's coming. We just have to make sure we've got all the changes.
In, in regard to that, once the state gets a budget, I assume if there's any changes, we'll deal with those after the 1st of July?
If it has a budget impact, we will. We will.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bradlin, for your financial update. And the next item is our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the counsel?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. That's the last item of our agenda. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.